So, welcome to the Village of Wapinders Falls Monthly Regular Meeting of the Mayor and Board of Trustees for today, Wednesday, October 14th, 2020. Now, would we please all say the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance-
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America-
And to the republic which is France, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have a few items of recognition. And I apologize, I'm still having computer problems. No, I'm not. Okay, so, tonight, we have a few items of recognition, and at the beginning of this meeting, I would like to ask that we all extend a hearty and sad farewell to Reverend Mother Deborah Magdalene of Zion Episcopal Church, who's been with us since April of 2012. She's here with us on this Zoom meeting. And on behalf of Mother Magdalene, I would like to ask the Board to pass a special resolution. Okay, and so, I'll begin reading it, it's gonna start sharing soon. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, tonight, I would like to ask the Board if they would consider passing this resolution as stated, whereas the Village of Wapinders Falls is dependent upon the prayer and spiritual guidance to ensure the peace and well-being of our community and the successful guidance of its residents; and whereas Mother Magdalene has served the Zion Episcopal Church, the oldest church in the Village of Wapinders Falls, for eight and one-half years as rector; and whereas Mother Magdalene has served both her church and village community as a loving and dedicated spiritual leader who cares greatly for Zion's parishioners and village residents in both good and bad times; and whereas Mother Magdalene has especially dedicated I'm sorry, I lost my screen. Has especially dedicated herself and her church to members of the recovery community, offering them a constant respite, a compelling witness account, and a fountain of compassion, acknowledging that during her tenure, Mother Magdalene has stewarded her church and performed her job in a manner which has earned her the highest level of praise and respect from the mayor, board of trustees, coworkers, and village residents. Also, having considered the level of true civic duty which Mother Magdalene has embodied during her time here, which is evident in her service to Rotary, combating local hunger and community events, the village board sees it fit to recognize her publicly. Therefore, be it resolved that the village board hereby bestows a formal resolution of recognition to Mother Magdalene for her remarkable contributions to the Village of Wapinders Falls. Furthermore, all village residents to whom this resolution is made known should express their gratitude to Mother Magdalene for constant devotion to and prayerful consideration for our community. And may I have a motion?
I'll make it, Mayor.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Catalano, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And I say aye as well, Reverend Mother Magdalene, thank you so much for all that you've done for our community, we truly appreciate you, and we will miss you.
Thank you so much, everybody, that was a beautiful proclamation, I'm teary-eyed. I don't wanna leave, but I need to, so, thank you.
We will remember you.
Thank you.
I remember you too, and I know where you live.
Okay, thank you very much. John, did you want to say anything?
Well, I just wanted to say that I joined the church five years ago over there, and I really look forward to Sundays and listen to Pastor Mag put her sermons, and just the way she carries herself, and how she shared a lot of her own personal things in her life with the congregation. I thought it was really, really exciting to go there, and looking forward to going back there again, even though she's not there. Hopefully, soon, we'll be able to have regular attendance at those Sunday events. It was really great working with you and knowing you, Pastor Mag.
Thank you, John, and it's wonderful sharing gardens with you, your gardens.
That's one thing I'd like to mention, Pastor Mag allowed me to have a pump garden in memory of our son, and that was really, really special for me to have that garden, and I just enjoy going over there, and she's been very helpful in helping me keep it up, thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you, added some beauty.
Okay, so, it goes, it continues to go downhill from here, but we have one more set of recognitions, but you, you may stay for the police recognitions, but after that, we're going to get down to business, so, I will go on to the next recognition. We received a letter from Lieutenant Carl Calabrese from the Wapinders Falls Police Department about two police officers and one of our dispatchers about the events of September 24th, at about approximately 10:45 at night, the two of our officers were dispatched for a reported noise complaint, and it turned into the scene of an active shooter on West Main Street. And we would like to express our appreciation for and our utmost respect for the unbelievable restraint that was shown at this scene, and the very special and careful care that was given for the residents of the Village of Wapinders Falls passing motorists, as well as the people that were even more involved. So, no one was hurt that night, and I would like to show you the next resolution. Okay, that's not the right one. Actually, how about Commissioner Burke, would you like to say a few words while I organize
Sure. Yeah, the officers did a great job that night, that night, along with the State Police and Sheriff's Department and MTA police who responded to assist them. Their training and everything else came into place that night, handled a situation where the person was walking down the street armed with an AR-15. After numerous times of telling him to drop the weapon, he finally realized it would be a better situation, he placed the weapon down, and they took him into custody, they went back and searched the house later on, and they found more weapons in the house. So, those weapons and some others that he had some other location were removed, and it's a simple incident of responding on a noise complaint, that you never know what will happen, what a simple call like that could turn into a situation like this, and like I said, the officers, everybody involved handled it excellently, including our dispatcher who was handling the incoming calls, she did her part, and everybody worked together to bring this to a safe resolution.
Okay, so, our first resolution that we would like to pass on behalf, is on behalf of our police dispatcher who's only been with us for seven months, her name is Autumn Piazza, and I will read the resolution, whereas the village is dependent upon the dedication and capability of its police force to ensure the safety and well-being of our community and the successful operation of its services; and whereas Autumn Piazza has served our village for seven months as a police dispatcher; and whereas on September 24th, Autumn as dispatcher with great care and attention for detail for the officers responded to a call where an intoxicated shooter threatened the lives of its neighbors passing motorists and the responding officers themselves; and whereas Autumn exercised calm and clarity of mind and confidence while she sought to protect the officers and bring the matter to an end with a peaceful resolution where no one was hurt, acknowledging that during this event, she executed her duties to the highest standards and performed her job in a manner which has earned her the highest level of praise and respect from the mayor, board of trustees, its coworkers, and village residents. Having considered the level of true civic duty which she embodies during her time here, the village sees it fit to recognize her publicly, therefore, be it resolved, if this is passed, that the village hereby bestows a formal resolution of recognition to Autumn for her remarkable municipal service to the village. Furthermore, all village residents to whom this resolution is made known should express their gratitude to Autumn for her careful response and caution in what could have been a violent and deadly event. And for that, could I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Trustee Panessa, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we have two resolutions. Okay, the following resolutions, I'm just showing the one for Scott McHugh, but I will read the ones for both Scott McHugh and Matthew Wall, who were both present at this and responded to this incident, whereas the village is dependent upon the dedication and capability of its police force to ensure the safety and well-being of our community and the successful operation of its services; and whereas Scott McHugh has served the village for 20 years as a police officer, and Matthew Wall has served the village for eight months as a police officer; whereas on September 24th, Scott and Matthew responded to a call where an intoxicated shooter threatened the lives of neighbors passing motorists and the responding officers themselves; and whereas Scott and Matthew exercised great restraint, clarity of mind, and bravery while they sought to control the situation and bring the matter to an end with a peaceful resolution where no one was hurt, acknowledging that during this event, Scott and Matthew executed their duties to the highest standards and performed their job in a manner which has earned them both the highest level of praise and respect from the mayor, board, coworkers, and village residents. Having considered the level of true civic duty which Scott and Matthew have embodied during their time here, the village sees it fit to recognize them both publicly, therefore, be it resolved, if this is passed, that the village hereby bestows a formal resolution of recognition to Scott and Matthew for their remarkable municipal service to the Village of Wapinders Falls. Furthermore, all village residents to whom these resolutions of recognition are made known should express their gratitude to Scott and Matthew for their careful response and bravery in what could have been a violent and deadly event. And for that set of two resolutions, one for Scott McHugh and one for Matthew Wall, could I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
In a second.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Huber, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and Walter, on behalf of the village board and on behalf of the entire Village of Wapinders Falls, we understand that during these times, that both of these officers have done a great, a great job for the Village of Wapinders Falls, for its people, and we commend you and your department, and especially the officers and the dispatcher for whom we passed resolutions, and we'd like to thank them. The clerk will get these resolutions out to them and a plaque for the two officers and the dispatcher.
Great, thank you, Mayor and the Board for doing that.
So, the next item I have is, this is a time when we do recognition announcements and special events, and at this time, I would like to, I would like to let the Board know that we received correspondence from Duchess County St. Patrick's Parade Committee, they are telling us that they plan to have their parade on March 6th, 2021, with the parade kickoff at 1:00. And I'm sure that they, I know that they will be taking precautions if we're still in a time of trouble, and hopefully, we will not be, but could, could I have a motion to, to pass that would allow them to hold this parade on March 6th?
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Seconded by Trustee Panessa, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And are there any other announcements or special events coming up? I think we do have some, so. Kevin?
We have a Halloween parade, it's like a, not a parade parade, but it's a, we'll be driving through the village, the fire department, hopefully, the police department, and a couple other individuals with little floats, we'll be handing out candy to the kids on Halloween Day at 12, starting at 12, 12 to 2, we'll be driving around the village that day. So- That's Recreation Committee will be doing that, and-
Can you, I'm sorry, can you see me, Kevin?
No, Jen, I'm not.
Okay, my picture went away when Matt was bringing up some stuff in there, so, not quite sure how to get back to you, I can hear you.
So, that's all, only thing we got going on for Halloween, I also, there is another group that's having a, I think it's a, they're having a radio station, and they're gonna be driving by with some cars, with, I guess, maybe Halloween music, they'll be handing out glow sticks, I've heard, on Friday, from, I think it's like from 3 to 5, I was told, but I don't know, I don't know all the details to that one, so, that's the only thing I have.
So, if I could just jump in for a second, I just wanted to let everybody know with regards to Recre-, here, Ian, thank you, I'm back, can you see me now?
Yes.
So, with Recreation, we will be having our meeting on the 19th of this month, so, we do have some changes going on in Recreation, and of course, we'd like to invite anybody interested in volunteering and participating going forward to come on that day, it's gonna be at 6:00. We do have things planned for Halloween, there is an event also planned for the day before Halloween, we're gonna use this meeting to really tighten everything up, but as far as I know, it's from 12 to 2 on Halloween, Kevin, that we're gonna be driving through the village?
Correct.
Okay, and the only thing, because things are happening a little late, we had to change some of the activities we were doing, instead of bringing the people to us with everything going on, we thought it best that we went to the people, that's why we're gonna drive through the village, and as soon as we can get some more pinned-down information on the 19th, we'll be putting that on the website, so everybody can be more familiar with the activity that's gonna be happening on the Friday before, and also the activity that's gonna be happening on that Saturday, which is actually Halloween.
Very good, are there any other announcements, recognition or special events?
There is another one, Mayor, that 11:00 AM on November 11th, there's gonna be a ceremony at the Major Joseph McDonald Park, corner of East Main Street and Route 9, hosted by the American Legion Post, Ward 27.
What time was that?
And I'll go ahead and make this announcement, because you're talking about, John, what did you just announce?
The American Legion's holding a ceremony, as we do every year, at 11:11:11.
Okay, good, all right, yes, because that's on the same day as the Board meeting, I believe, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, so, at this time, I'd like to ask the clerk to do the roll call.
And I'm gonna say goodnight, everybody, and thank you.
Goodnight, thank you, God bless, all the best.
Thank you.
Mayor Alexander?
Here.
Trustee Marka John?
Here.
Trustee Catalano?
Here.
Trustee Nuznik? Trustee Huber?
Present.
Trustee Panessa?
Here.
Trustee Lamars?
Here.
Village Attorney Wallace?
Okay, so, I've confirmed with the village attorney that tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with the Governor's March 13th, 2020 Executive Order 202.1, and all superseding orders which suspend certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow a municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view tonight's work session meeting, and a transcript will be provided at a later date. I've done a roll call of the Board members, and there is a quorum present for this meeting, I've also confirmed with the village clerk that this meeting has been duly noticed, we've fulfilled our legal notice requirements, and so, at this time, we'll continue on with the agenda, and could I get a motion to approve the September 9th and September 30th meeting minutes?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Panessa, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and the next item on the agenda is, could I get a motion from the Finance Committee to authorize to pay bills as per approved warrants?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and so, the next item on the agenda, I'll let the attorney take over here, this is a public hearing about Chapter 143, amending that law in Schedule 14356, Craig, you wanna take us through this?
Okay, you'll recall, on, at the September 30th meeting, you were given a draft of a proposed local law, which you authorized the village clerk to set for a public hearing for tonight, for possible adoption. I'm told by village clerk, Karish, that, that the local law was advertised in the local paper in accordance with, with, you know, statute, and for your consideration, is the proposed text of that local law. It has to do with amending Chapter 143, which is Vehicles and Traffic, for Fanny Reese Park. So, after you open and close the public hearing for public comment, at that moment in time, you will either accept the law as written, or modify it, which may result in, you know, a, another public hearing, or you may take no action, so, I'll leave it to Mayor, if you wanna open it up to comment of the, of the Board before taking public comment.
Okay, does the Board have any comments? It's exactly as it was written in the September 30th meeting. So, just, I'm just gonna go over the highlights of the law.
We have a motion to open the hearing.
Oh, okay, could I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Trustee Lammers?
Correct.
All those in favor? Okay, and this law, this allow for public parking in the Fanny Reese parking lot for a four-hour time limit, and it would be between the hours of 8:00 AM and 10:00 PM. It would not allow any public parking in the lot between the hours of 4:00 AM and 7:00 AM, unless you had a permit.
How many permitted spots we putting in there, Mayor?
That is, that's up for discussion.
Okay.
So, actually-
What you have before you is the resolution, the text of the local-
I mean, I'm just curious on the permits, that's all.
Are there any questions about it from the Board, any comments? Okay, if there's no comments from the Board, are there any public comments? And just before we get started, if you're on YouTube and you would like to make a comment, you should get out of the YouTube version of the meeting and go onto the Village website and click on the Zoom link that's on our Village website, where it tells you about the meeting for today. Okay, are you guys seeing the text of the law right now in front of you?
Yeah.
This is just the resolution.
Pull up the actual law. I'm sorry, I'm just, okay, here it is. Okay, so what you see in front of you is the local law that's proposed. I will read it out loud for the record. The local law, amending Chapter 143, vehicles and traffic, schedule is 14356, schedule 18, time limit parking of the code of the village of Wapins Falls. It says be it enacted by the village board of trustees of the village as follows. Section 1 legislative intent, it amends Chapter 143, vehicles and traffic, schedules 14356, schedule 18, time limit parking of the code of the village to add parking time limits for Fannie Reese parking lot. The local law shall apply within the village. Chapter 143, Article 5, Schedule 14356, schedule 18, time limit parking shall be amended to read as follows. Schedule 18, time parking, the name of the lot will be Fannie Reese Parking Lot. It's a four-hour parking.
Right.
Could you silence that person?
Sorry.
So could you put yourself on mute? Okay, so the time limits will be a four-hour parking limit, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. No overnight parking from 4:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. without village issued overnight parking permit. No parking Tuesday and Thursday from 7:00 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. for parking light maintenance. And the parking lot is identified as tax ID parcel 1346016158142953500000, and it used to be known as 2694-2696 West Main Street. Except as specifically modified by the amendments contained herein, the time limit parking is adopted and amended from time to time thereafter, is otherwise to remain in full force and effect, and is otherwise ratified, re-adapted, and confirmed. It is the intention of the village and hereby enacted that the provisions of this local law shall be included in the code, that the sections and subsections of this local law may be renumbered or relettered by the codifier to accomplish such intention that the codifier shall make no substantive changes to this local law, that the word "local law" shall be changed to "chapter," "section," or other appropriate word as required for codification, and that any such rearranging of the numbering and editing shall not affect the validity of this local law or the provisions of the code affected thereby. The invalidity of any word, section, clause, paragraph, sentence, part, or provision of this law shall not affect the validity of any other part, which can be given effect without such part or parts. The local law shall take effect immediately upon filing in the office of the New York State Secretary of State in accordance with Section 27 of the Municipal Home Rule Law. Okay, so that was the local law. And again, that gave people time to log on. Are there any comments about this law? This is the time that the public can make comments about this law. Okay, let the record show that there were no comments. And could I get a motion to close this public hearing?
I'll make it.
Okay, I'll take the motion by trustee Huber. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Niznik. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the next item on the agenda.
Mayor, you have to, you have to adopt the resolution. You have to take action.
Okay, so we closed the public hearing. Could I get a motion to adopt this local law as it is stated in this resolution that we've already read?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Huber. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that passes this local law with the change to 143, Section 56.
You want to take a roll call just for the record.
So could I get a vote from Kevin Huber?
Aye.
Aye?
Yep.
Billy Marka John?
Aye.
Jennifer Niznik?
Aye.
Mary Panessa?
Aye.
Kristen Catalano?
Aye.
Brian Lammers?
Aye.
Okay, and let the record show I voted aye as well. Okay, the next item on the agenda is an executive order that we've advertised, and I'd like to make public at this meeting. And this says, by executive order of the mayor, please be advised that during the evening hours of October 30th through November 1st, between the hours of 9:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m., the following day, it shall be unlawful for any minor to congregate, loiter, wander, remain, or play in or upon any public place, park, area, street, road, or highway in the village. The terms remain, and loiter mean linger or stay, or fail to leave premises when requested to do so by a police officer, owner, operator, or other person in control of the premises. Not minor means under the age of 18 years of age. And the village is aware that there has been some discussion about whether or not Halloween should even be allowed. We have gotten guidance from the CDC, and so we'll be publishing guidance for safe trick-or-treating, and encourage parents and children to take advantage of some of the activities that will be held on Friday and Saturday in lieu of going out from door to door. If you do go out from door to door, please maintain social distance. Make sure that the people who are handing candy out to you are using precautions when they hand out the candy. Do not allow your children to stick their hands, bare hands especially, into a bowl of candy. And just be careful and use your masks. So I don't know if the board wants to discuss Halloween more, but if anybody needs to, wants to make a comment about Halloween, this is a good time to bring that up. There any public comments about Halloween? Okay, so one month ago, we just had an election, and this is not the way we usually do things, but it's already time to pass a resolution designating the call of election. And we have our chief election officer, who is our clerk, John Carsh. And John, would you talk to us about the call of election?
Yes, Mayor. On board, I will be asking for your approval at the end of this resolution. Resolution by the village board of trustees in the village of Wapins Falls, New York, is follows. Section 1, pursuant to Section 504 of the election law, the general village election of and for said village will be held on the 16th day of March 2021, and that poll shall be open for voting between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. Section 2, that the said village has been divided into three election wards, and that a description of said wards together with the polling place for each such ward is as follows. Election Ward 1, all that portion of said village lying north and west of the village, Wapins Creek. The polling place in Ward 1 is the village hall 2582 South Avenue, the village. Election Ward number 2, election ward number 2 is comprised of all that portion of said village generally bounded as follows. On the south, by the village boundary line; on the north, by the east, by East Main Street; on the east, by South Avenue; and on the west, by the Wapins Creek. And the polling place is 2582 South Avenue. Election Ward 3, all that portion of village lying outside the two wards above described. The polling place is 2582 South Avenue, which is the village hall. Section 4, this resolution shall take effect immediately. And I have a motion to accept that call of election.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Right, trustee Huber. All those in favor? I'm going to do a roll call. Trustee Huber?
Aye.
Trustee Marka John?
Aye.
Trustee Panessa?
Aye.
Trustee Niznik?
Aye.
Trustee Lammers?
Aye.
Trustee Catalano?
Aye.
Okay, and the next item on the agenda is, there are a group of hearings about some property.
I have one more, Mayor.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to ask for approval for a resolution designating offices to be filled at the next general election. Resolution designating offices to be filled at the next general election, and the terms thereof, be resolved by the board of trustees of the village of Wapins Falls, New York as follows. Section 1, that pursuant to the subdivision 3.8 of Section 15-104 of the election law, this board does hereby designate the offices to be filled at the general election, March 16, 2021, and the respective terms of such offices as follows. Office, Mayor. Term, two years. Trustee, first ward. Term, two years. Trustee, second ward. Term, two years. Trustee, third ward. Term, two years. I need approval.
Could I get a motion?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Catalano. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call, I'm sorry. Could I, trustee Huber?
Aye.
Trustee Marka John?
Aye.
Trustee Panessa?
Aye.
Trustee Niznik?
Aye.
Trustee Lammers?
Aye.
Trustee Catalano?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is, we have a group of property issues. We've got Brian Murphy here with us, as well as our village attorney. Brian, do you want to discuss 8 Tribuco, 10 North Street, and 25 South Remsen?
Yeah, that's fine, Mayor. Would you have a preference of which one you'd like to start with? 25 South Remsen Avenue, we are, we have received one bid to clean that up, and village clerk Carsh, I believe, has that. He might know a little bit more about that than I do.
So, John, you want to talk to us about the bids you've received?
Yes. Brian and I have been working together to try to get contractors to bid on the cleanup of that property. We've showed it to three, and we've asked four. One of the four gave me a quote, $4,200. The other three refused to quote it, and that there was some apprehension about going on to that property. Since I feel, and I pass it by our treasurer, since we went out and requested four bids and only received one, that it's consistent with our procurement policy, and that we could go ahead with that one bid. And of course, the monies for that would be placed onto the tax rule for recovery. There, you know, I spoke with all the contractor, not all of them, but three of them, and there's some concern about the safety of the contractor going on to that property, which I would need to address separately with the village attorney before granting the award of that bid.
So is the one loan bidder insured?
Yes.
And do we have a copy of his insurance?
I have it from other jobs, but I can get it for that one, too.
Probably be a good idea to make sure it's specific to this job.
Yes. There's concern about the safety, and I'm not quite sure about how to handle that. So I would like to discuss that offline with the village attorney.
Okay, so we'll take this up in executive session?
All right.
Yeah, I like, the contractor that I had met out there, he wasn't quite concerned for his safety, but I just did not receive a written quote like I had asked. He had provided a verbal, but, you know, I let him know that we needed it in writing, and I did not receive it.
Okay, so.
So what I suggest, Mayor, is, I just want to go back to the history of this so that the new trustees are aware of what's been going on. Pursuant to our property maintenance code that was passed earlier in the year, the village board can actually hold a hearing to determine and allow the homeowner to actually come before the board and, you know, answer to charges, because what the code does allow for is for the village to use self-help, remediate the property, clean it up, and then impose the cost of the cleanup on the homeowner through the taxes. And in this particular instance, Brian Murphy had issued two previous orders to remedy. We, the board, the prior board action elected to handle this in two phases. And right now, we're at phase one, which is the initial cleanup of the first order to remedy of all the brush debris, high grass, weeds, et cetera. The second phase had to do with a dilapidated structure and possible demolition, and the board deferred action on that until they could get more information on exactly what was entailed and scope of work. Is that correct, Brian? Did I recite that history correctly? Oh, Brian, there.
Brian, you're on mute.
I'm sorry.
So anyway, Brian, did you hear me?
I did not. I apologize.
All right. I just told them about the history of this particular property.
Yep.
And the recommendation to the board is to adjourn the public hearing on this first phase to October 28th for possible authorization of the one bid that was received.
And I can reach out to the other contractor that I met out there and, you know, ask him to submit it. If we're going to leave the public hearing open, I would absolutely like to give the other guy the opportunity to get his bid in also.
Could we set an earlier meeting date? And because there's a couple of things going on, I think that any other landscaping person is going to have lots of leaves on October 28th, and lots, there's going to be lots of work out there, and this is something that I think should be done sooner rather than later.
Mayor, that would require a special meeting.
Could we announce a special meeting tonight?
That's fine, as long as you have a quorum that is going to commit to attend. It would have to be on at least three days' notice, so.
So could we do a Monday meeting or a Tuesday meeting?
That would be 10, 20, 20, or 10, 19?
20, 20.
What time?
We could do, we could do, I could do a 4 o'clock meeting. It's just to take care of this one item. It's just to take care of this one item.
On what day is that?
Tuesday, the twentieth.
So I'll already be at the hall, I have another meeting at two, so if you can have something around then.
Okay, so can we, you have a two o'clock meeting?
Yes.
So can we do it two thirty? You think your meeting will be that quick?
Um, it, it doesn't, yeah, I think so.
And Kevin, would you be able to come at two thirty?
Yeah, I can meet there at two thirty.
Uh, Kristin, are you around?
I have another appointment that I can't change for that time.
Okay, Mary, are you working? And Brian, are you around on that day?
I'm working, I'm down in the Bronx.
Okay. And Billy, would you be able to just do a, it would be a fifteen minute long meeting to vote on one item? It would, it should not even be fifteen minutes, it should be a five minute long meeting.
Yeah, so I can make it.
Okay, great, so if the board's okay with that, I'd like to ask if we could vote on having a special meeting on Tuesday, October twentieth, at two thirty? Is that, can I get a motion from the board?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we got a second by Trustee Niznik and a motion by Trustee Huber, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, so Mayor, that, just so you, everybody's understood, the understanding is we have a quorum. If all four members are able to make that special meeting, if one person's not able to make that, then the hearing will not be able to go forward, the special meeting.
Right.
All right, so it's really imperative that everybody who has committed be there and at that point in time, be ready to take action, which will be binding on the board and it will direct the future of that particular property enforcement. John, you're gonna need to just advertise the special, notice the special meeting down to the public and on the, on the website.
I traditionally do it on the website and I post them in the village.
Very good.
I only have Brian, Billy Markajon, and Kevin Huber, who is the third one?
The fourth person is myself and then the third person is Trustee Niznik.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Brian, you wanna go on to the next locations?
Okay, um, the next one for consideration would be eight Tribuco Place, which is another property that needs to be addressed with mowing the lawn, well, not so much mowing the lawn, weed whacking and trimming of a bunch of obnoxious growth, overgrown trees, and there's poison sumac throughout the property. And that's, that's really it, you know, we, we've done our notices, we've sent registered mail. I have pictures, again, today, that, you know, nothing has really changed except growing more. I don't know that, that the house is vacant, but the owner comes and puts the garbage cans out every Tuesday night and comes back and puts them in, I know that, so they definitely, somebody's going by there if it's not the owner.
So there's been no change in the last forty-five days, other than getting worse?
That's what I see, yes, correct.
Okay.
My recommendation is that we, we go in and clean it.
Are we ready to vote on that?
I think we have. Maybe, maybe we can make that, add that to the special meeting.
Okay.
For action.
Uh, maybe I can, I can reach out to the, the one contractor that I'm, you know, that, that came to South Remsen, you know, for us to look at South Remsen, and maybe I can ask him to go look at this one and if we could get a, a, a bid and maybe, John, if you could reach out to the, the other contractors, you know, that put a bid out for South Remsen, we could get a couple bids to bring to that special meeting and go from there.
I can do the one that we have, but it looks like you and I are crossing paths here. You know, you're out getting them, I'm out getting them. I, I think they should all come from one spot.
I only got one, so if you want to do that, that's fine. But I only got the other one because you told me you had two, I didn't know you had the third on the way. That's, that's why I was trying to get the third.
No, I'm just trying to think where this really fits, I think it all fits with your department.
Well, if you give me the name of the other two contractors, I'll call them.
Okay, good.
I don't know if you're gonna have enough time between now and the special meeting date in order to get these bids.
Otherwise, we, I don't, you know.
That one might have to be, maybe we, you should, you know, hold off on that one and set a different date. But you can, you know, it's up to, it's up to the board.
Let's see if, let's see if we got time, maybe we can tweak that one and...
It would be nice to squeeze it in.
Yeah, I mean, because otherwise, I mean, winter's just gonna kill it all anyway, so...
Well, you had other things besides, besides...
At Tribuco, yeah, they, they have a, you know, a massive amount of two-by-twelves taking up their entire driveway that have been there, I don't know, seven years. You know, the tarps are shredded, the wood is starting to deteriorate and rot. You know, that, that would be something I would certainly like to be able to remove as rubbish. I mean, at this point, it's garbage, it, it's useless. The other issues, you know, there's a set of stairs that have rotted away and are gone, but I don't think we can go in and build a new set of stairs, but there are things that I, I believe we can do, and that is, again, remove all the obnoxious growth or any accumulation of garbage, and there's lumber, pretty much is garbage at this time, in my opinion.
So I, I do believe that the law does allow us to, to order the stairs to be built and be built by a contractor and taken out of taxes if that's something we deem necessary, is that correct?
No, that, that's something that we're not gonna be able to do because that will just add possible liability to the village. So unfortunately, that dangerous condition will, it's on private property. I don't recommend anything unless it's to barricade that from the public possibly going on there, but that's something that I'll talk to Brian about, because I don't even know if we can do that.
Can we do an appearance ticket, can we do court?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that'll be the next round. Excellent.
We can do that.
Yeah.
But we're not, we're not in the business of going on people's properties and rebuilding their stairs, so...
No, that...
That wasn't the intent, intent of the property maintenance code.
Excellent. Okay, so we will try to get the quote, I will try to have quotes for the brush and obnoxious growth, for eight Tribuco for the special meeting. And then, Tony, I will, I will talk with you tomorrow about how to go about maybe get the removal of all this wood. I don't, if we can get that in the same bid or not, I don't, I'm not sure.
The last one is a, a matter on ten north, ten, ten...
Yeah, correct, ten north.
Ten North Street, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So that matter, the background of ten North Street, that, that individual actually appeared with an attorney. And initially, after Brian served the order to remedy, there was a, a cleanup of some debris. And since that cleanup, there has appeared more stuff that was not part of the first order to remedy. So I saw pictures today of that particular property, I sent it to his attorney, and I've instructed Brian to issue additional orders to remedy to address those. So we're not in a hearing, we're not in a hearing posture with respect to that. That has to circle around because of the new orders to remedy, and that will be a future action possibly for your consideration. So I think what we should do is just adjourn that public hearing for now until such time as the new orders to remedy catch up to it.
Well, can I, can I jump in here real quick? I, I drove by it tonight and I noticed some of the stuff from the back was moved to the side lot. And it seems to be a car covered up, and my only imagination would be it's unregistered, but it's covered up with a tarp that's probably gonna be destroyed by the end of winter. So, I mean,
All right.
It, it, something needs, something needs to be done there. And he is working, he cleaned up around the house a little bit, but it seems like he's just moving it around the yard. Kind of thing.
Yeah.
I agree. I, I believe on the Pell side, there's another vehicle under that blue tarp, but I can't see it. And then there's, on the North Street side, there's something under a black tarp that's quite large, and I can't make out, I can't make out what it is, but the other one on the, the Pells next to the large garage, you can see it's a duly dump truck, there's no doubt about it, there, you can see the tires.
Yeah.
But I, I, I don't, I can't get clear pictures of any part of it to, to figure out if it's valid or not.
They, they moved the Eiffel Tower from the backyard to the, the side lot along Pell's Place.
Yeah, and, you know, he, he's got enough grills and kitchen sinks in his front yard to...
The tractor.
Very large party.
It's just, it's, it's not pleasant to look at, and if I lived on this street, I wouldn't want to look at it. And for a person that has looked at pretty crappy properties, I, I know, I know how the residents feel on that street, because I, I've seen a lot.
He's got an oil tank on the side of that garage, you know, I, I can't go on the property, so I'm only, the, the pictures I have are from the road, you know, and you, you can't tell, that's a deep, that, that garage goes way back and I have no idea.
Is there, isn't there a site plan for that garage?
Not really a site plan, you know, there was a lot of ZBA, zoning board of appeals minutes dating way back, I, I have not really come across an official site plan. There, there are a lot, a lot of meeting minutes going way back in reference to the use of the garage.
So is this something, Craig, we should take into executive session?
Yeah, we should, because there's going to, there are, there are orders to remedy that, that would need to be issued that have not been issued yet, and we're talking about a possible investigation that is exempt. So I think that maybe we should just take it in the executive session.
Okay, so are there, are there any other properties, Brian, for you to bring up?
Not, not, um, that, uh, no, not right now, not right now.
Okay, any questions from the board about other properties that aren't on this list?
I have a question about twenty-five South Remsen that we didn't talk about, which was resolution thirty-four twenty twenty that talked about abatement of the buildings, more specifically, the garage that was falling down. At the last meeting, September ninth, Trustee Lammers adjourned the public hearing to ten fourteen tonight. Are we gonna move that again to...
That, that's the phase two that we were talking about.
Yeah, so we're gonna leave the public hearing just open and then determine later on when to talk about it?
We're gonna come out of executive session and they're going to probably adjourn it to a date certain for a control date.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any questions from the public about any properties? Okay, so there's no questions from the public. I'm gonna go on to the next item on the agenda. Are there any, Craig, are there any motions that we're ready to make?
With respect to...
Any of these properties?
Uh, no, well...
Adjourned and anything?
Unless everybody wants to adjourn the, the second phase of twenty-five Remsen, South Remsen, which I would probably recommend that, you know, we just adjourn it to the November meeting date, the latest one.
I'd say we adjourn the second phase of that, let's get the first phase cleaned up, the yard debris cleaned up, the brush and grass and the trees. I'd, I'd be in favor for that.
But can you adjourn to ten twenty, the last, the October workshop meeting? The last Wednesday? Okay, so can I get a motion to adjourn the second phase to the last Wednesday in October?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Niznik, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is we are in receipt of a request from VFW Victor Bercon Post Number five nine one three to hold a fundraiser, November fourteenth and fifteenth, from eight to four each day at the intersection of West Main and Delavarn Avenue. This is something that they've done in the past. Is there any discussion on this?
Nope.
If there's no discussion, can I get a motion?
I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Catalano, are there any questions from the public? No questions from the public, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're also, we have been working on an easement for Central Hudson for a gas regulator, and we've adjourned that to this meeting, are we ready to move forward with that? Craig?
I don't think so, Mayor, because I reached out to our, to the village engineer, I haven't heard back as to whether or not there was a consensus as to an agree, you know, agreed upon map.
Okay.
So I think we're gonna have to adjourn this matter.
So could, I'm gonna adjourn this, I'm gonna ask if we can vote to adjourn this to October twentieth, because it's time sensitive and it might, it's something we might need to take action on sooner than later. So could I get a motion to adjourn it to October twentieth?
For the special meeting?
Yeah.
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Markajon, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is we are in receipt of correspondence from WT Garner, who has voted in anti Lojura as a new member of the company and department. Can we get a motion to accept those, that correspondence?
I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Markajon, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we've got some correspondence from SW Johnson, who reported Joe Raphael Senior has changed his status to life inactive, can I get a motion to accept this correspondence?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Panessa, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is we're in receipt of a change of status request for a police officer, Peter Justino, to go from part-time to full-time, all civil service required.
Sorry, Mayor, that was removed.
Okay.
Now.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a review of the monthly department stats for the police department. Can we get a motion, excuse me, can I get the commissioner to go over this report for us?
Sure. Basically, there's three hundred and sixty calls for the month, a little down from the previous month.
basically there's 360 calls for the month, a little down from the previous month. Um, arrests are up. We had 11 arrests. Um, parking ticket, excuse me, moving violations were down from last month. Um, basically, um, we added the two new sections that, um, that they wanted added. The parking tickets has been added on there. It shows the monthly parking tickets now. We only have five parking tickets for the month. And we have our use of force, which we have one incident last month, and that was the, um, incident we described on West Main Street just now. Um, other than that, uh, just not much else on the report there.
So are there any questions from the ward? Questions? Are there any questions from the public? Okay. Uh, we would also like to, uh, acknowledge and thank the Grace Smith House as well as, uh, the department for working on the issue of domestic violence. Uh, so we, uh, if you saw in Mizzera Park on October 2nd, I believe there was a, uh, display of, uh, hand painted, um, hand painted, uh, T-shirts by, uh, people who had, uh, been involved with Grace Smith House, victim of domestic violence. Uh, it was a, uh, nice, uh, nice showing. There was information handed out to village residents who passed by and visitors who came through to the village. And we want to thank Nina Schutzenman, uh, from Grace Smith House for, uh, helping us out to get out the word about domestic violence. And also we'd like to thank the police, uh, for assigning somebody to work on that issue and to get more information out, out about that, uh, both now and in the future. Um, one thing that people should know is that the village has one of the highest rates of domestic violence, if not the highest percentage wise in the entire county. This might be because we have a police department that, uh, reports more than other police departments. So it's not clear that other police departments have the same kind of, uh, reporting. We're only one square mile and it's possible that here, um, nothing escapes, uh, any neighbor's notice so that there are more, uh, calls made. But in any event, it's a serious matter. It's one that's affected us in the past in, uh, horrible events. And we just, uh, would like to continue to work on that issue since it's one of the, the biggest issues in the village. So, um, another thing is that we do have a police reform committee set up and we have talked to people who are, um, who are willing to serve on that committee. We've, uh, got, so we, we had to limit the number of people that could be on this, but we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, um, eight, nine, 10, 11 people, I think, total on this committee. Uh, so I would like to let you know who we have on the committee. We've got Cheryl Wallace, uh, from the village, Reverend Ed Hunt from Bethel Baptist Church, Lori Holloway, Brian Lammers, Jerry Montez, Todd Bowen, Bob Relia, and the, uh, do you have the principal's name?
No.
Okay. So we have a, and we also have a principal from the Wappinger Central School District. And, um, so this is, uh, this is a good group of people and they will be, um, following the guidance by New York State for the police reform, uh, review that's mandated by New York State. Uh, we're also taking it very seriously and that's why we, uh, took a lot of consideration to get, um, from the many, many people who, uh, asked to be a part of this. We've, um, got a, a pretty good group there. So anyway, I'd like to thank Walter for all the work that he's done on this. This has been, um, a lot of work, not just for him, but for other members of his department as they try to sort through, um, what needs to get done. But I think that our police agency has done an outstanding job and it's, um, and we're proud that, uh, we have an incident not of, uh, shame, but one of, that shows great restraint on the part of our police officers. Uh, they did a fantastic job, uh, taking care of us and, uh, taking care of even the victim in this case. And, uh, and the perpetrator and, uh, each other and all of the village residents and passersby who were involved. So again, we would like to acknowledge that, uh, again, our officers have shown that they are ahead of the curve and, uh, always looking out for everybody, regardless of any situation, if any circumstances or, um, background. So thank you, Walter. I'm going to move on to the other committee reports and, uh, at this time, trustee Huber, you want to talk to us about the highway? Kevin, are you there?
Yes, you hear me, mayor?
Yeah, now I can.
Uh, uh, we're still ongoing Monday pickup with the brush and grass, but they're still doing that. They also, uh, set, schedule up for leaf pickups. I think that out in the bill, I seen, uh, Anne Marie downstairs folding them up. And they, uh, were doing more sidewalks this month. They did, uh, behind the cemetery, St. Mary's, uh, Nelson Avenue down to Clinton Street. And they, they had to fix a sidewalk on Nelson Avenue, just a individual slab. Then they moved over to McCafferty Place. They had to do a curb and a sidewalk because Central Hudson took a pole out and never fixed it. They also had to fix, uh, sidewalk on, uh, Church Street by the Groundhog. And, uh, that about sums it up. I mean, these guys do a lot every month, you know, all week long. I got a full list here. I'd love to read through it all, but just a lot. So I'm going to go with that for now.
Okay. And I think, um, they are starting leaf pickup, right?
Yeah, there was a schedule that was, went out. I'm not, I don't have the date when it starts, but there's a schedule that was going out.
Yeah. So if you, um, need more information, you can call the village hall, but it should have gone out in your last, um, garbage bill. So look in your garbage bill. There should be information about the leaf pickup schedule. Okay. So, uh, I mean, I, so for the new trustees who haven't done this yet, we, we are only two weeks away from our reorganization. So it's possible that the committees have not met yet since we've reorganized with new committee members. So I'm going to read through each committee and one person from each committee should update, um, the board. And tonight, the update could be that you have not yet met. So, um, from the fire committee, can I get an update?
We had 27 calls for the month. We haven't met yet this month, mayor. Cause there is a new member and we will meet this month. I'll get a hold of the chief.
Okay. Very good. Safety, John Karge?
We have adequate inventory of equipment.
Okay. Uh, so the village also had two occasions in the last, uh, two weeks where it has asked village employees to stay home because of the threat of infection by, uh, the coronavirus. Um, so, uh, we actually, this involved actually three employees. Um, thankfully nobody, uh, everyone has tested negative, uh, but we're taking this very seriously. And we're asking our employees not to come into work if they are sick and, uh, to, to stay home with any type, type of illness and to, uh, take testing seriously and social distancing seriously. At this time, it might be a good time. We've gotten a public comment asking, um, when we would resume, uh, public meetings. And, um, I think, uh, my, my thought process has been that, uh, as, uh, that it, that it's best right now to stay very safe. Um, I would certainly recommend that we continue Zoom meetings after the pandemic. And I would also acknowledge that we might have, uh, more different, uh, people participating in the meetings through, uh, the, um, the internet and Zoom than we've had in the past. So it, uh, so, um, the board has discussed it. Um, if we were to have, uh, meetings with the board here, uh, we have such small space that it's likely that we would consider not allowing anybody in and still doing the meeting by Zoom. Um, is there any discussion from the board or anything the board wants to bring up? Okay. So, um, you, if there, is there any other public comment on this? Okay. So the next committee is, uh, recreation. Is there an update on recreation? I think you already, you did.
I would just re, um, state that we're going to be meeting on, uh, the 19th of the month. And anybody who's entered, we'd love to have people show up and volunteer. Uh, there'll be some changes in the recreation committee coming up. And, um, as far as trunk or treat goes, we have decided to go with the parade. We haven't nailed down all the, um, um, details of it yet, but we will have them after that meeting and we will be posting it online. So you'll get your information there, but we'd love to see people attend the meeting. Get some ideas.
Thank you, Jennifer. Um, for the water, uh, board, the board has taken on a new, uh, member. Member is Mary Morris. She's an alternate. She comes to us from Duchess County Water and Wastewater and brings, um, decades of experience in, uh, especially in the financial side of, uh, water and wastewater. So we had her first meeting with her in attendance. We've been discussing the filtration plant. We've got an application and, um, we are still working on the engineering for that. And, uh, we also discussed the, um, the Central Hudson regulator that needs to, uh, go in on water, uh, department property at the northern end of the village to supply gas, natural gas to the people who've lost their natural gas from the, um, Central Hudson service that was hit on West Main Street. And, uh, the other thing that we've been working on is, uh, how to address the, uh, tank situation and the water pressure situation throughout the village. So, uh, those were things that we worked on this month. Um, I don't think there was any, oh, there might have been, but I don't think there is any, uh, personnel policies that we're working on. If, if personnel, uh, items that have to do with particular personnel are not discussed in public. But if there's anything that was touched on from the personnel committee, um, for policies, you could bring that up now. Anybody from the personnel committee? Okay. And on the sewer side, we also had Mary Morris join us for the sewer meeting. We continue to work on, uh, the sewer projects at Tri Municipal Sewer Plant. Um, we have also, uh, been working on the sewer plants upstream of the, uh, village of Wappinger's Falls. And, uh, we've been working with the state and the watershed intermunicipal council on projects that, uh, would treat sewer, septic and agricultural runoff as it goes into the watershed and ultimately ends up in our lake and threatening lots of water supplies, uh, all the way up and down the watershed. Um, so, uh, we have also been working on the grants that we have this month. We attended, um, meetings that the county had about seat, the community development block grant. And I'd like to ask if we could sp- schedule a special public hearing for October, uh, the, the final Wednesday and October meeting. So could I have a motion to advertise a special public hearing about the community development block grant? And, uh, to solicit input for that grant submission?
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Nesnick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, um, are there any questions about water, personnel, sewer, or grants? Okay. Are there any other items from the board that you want to bring up at this time? I will bring up that, uh, we did also get a comment from the public asking us about, um, what is the status of the Bain Park project? And this is a good time to, uh, remind everyone that on October 20th, there's going to be a special public meeting about Bain Park. Um, and that'll be good. So you'll get a chance to, if you come to that meeting on October 20th, it's a Tuesday night and I think it starts at six o'clock. Uh, and it's, um, it will be held by Zoom. So take a look at our website or Facebook for the Zoom invite for that meeting. And you can, uh, come and talk about the Bain Park concept. So the, the corner portion, portion is already taken into, uh, into, in the comments from that portion and from, uh, the past five years that we've been working on it. But there are, um, more, uh, there's more work, uh, to do in the rest of the five acres of the park. So, uh, we can have a discussion about what else should be done there or what should be added on the outs, on the, around the, uh, inclusive park that's, uh, throughout the rest of the area. And?
Matt?
Yep.
Is there anything you could say real quick about the Shoemaker store? Someone had asked me about that today, um, with a radio station.
Yes. So we had some public meetings on, uh, we had a survey and, uh, on August 13th, we had a public meeting, uh, for public input and we, uh, collected all of the, the comments from that. And there was overwhelming support for, uh, using the cobbler shop and renting it to a person for the use of, um, for the use of, uh, an internet radio station. So, uh, this is not something that would require a tower. It is, um, just something that would be, uh, inside the building. The person that we've been talking to works with, his name is, uh, Jason Gisser and he has an entity called Soul Mouth Radio. And he, um, uses local talent. So he only spotlights local talent who are not signed with big labels. And, uh, he's also has the ability to put, uh, performances in our public performance space, which would be mainly the, um, would now be three spots. So it could be the boathouse or it could be the amphitheater at Franny Reese Park, or it could be at the bandstand. We've talked to him about helping us organize a, um, music festival, uh, in the village of Wappinger's Falls and helping us to get and nail down the talent for that. So, um, the, the, we, we had brought up the licensing agreement in, uh, a meeting in the past and we had laid out, uh, what we would like to do. So we would like to sign a licensing agreement with this individual. And we hope to bring that to the, uh, board meeting on the 20, uh, the last Wednesday in October, the 28th. Is this it?
Yes, thank you.
Um, also on Franny Reese Park, we did get another comment. Um, and the comment came in that, uh, I'll read this one. Uh, so they were asking us about parking on West Main Street and okay, so it's okay, so it says, hello, in these trying times of continuous uncertainty, we would like to see if the village can provide an update on municipal parking on West Main Street. Last update we received that there was a limbo situation between the state and Central Hudson in regards to a retaining wall gas line. Three years in business, parking has always been a challenge, as if that wasn't hard enough. COVID hit and recommendations change operations daily. If the village isn't going to enforce posted time restrictions on a more consistent basis for street parking, what is the next best alternative? A timeline would be greatly appreciated. Also, garbage cans provided by the village are always full and forgotten about on West Main. We would like to see those get the attention East Main Street garbage cans get. Thank you, RJ. And he says, PS, kudos to the police department team who de-escalated the armed citizen situation. So to give you an update on the Central Hudson situation, the village and, the village and DOT and Central Hudson have come up with a way to avoid having any of the parking spaces along West Main Street be closed. They were initially saying that they would like to move the line of traffic to the west and take away the parking along the hillside side of West Main and the first block of West Main from the bridge. And so we were able to get our contractors to put up a curb around the area that is where the wall was pushed in. There's, after that, we'll be readdressing the sidewalk situation. And then we will be able to look at enforcing parking. So that's something that we could talk about tonight. There is a parking time limit on West Main Street. There are many more businesses and there are lots of good, very good businesses on West Main Street. And parking is a great challenge. We will be adding the 16 parking spots for the law that we just passed. The board did discuss that it's difficult to think about adding more parking when we're not consistently enforcing the parking rules. So there were quite a few board members who brought that up. And so it's something that the board should be talking to the police committee about. Are there any comments about those, those items or the trash cans at this time? I think the, the highway committee can talk to highway about picking up the garbage cans on West Main Street, keeping an eye out for them. I think part of this is that the West Main Street has been such a construction zone, but we're about to get further out of that. And so I think we could go back to more of a normal on West Main Street soon. So I, I think that the police committee and the highway committee should look at enforcement and garbage. Are there any, is there any more discussion on that? Okay, so I'll ask the committees to look at that and maybe that's something we could get an update on for the 20th. So we'll just put, that won't be a voting matter, but it would just like to get an update on police and highway for the 20th, garbage and enforcement.
I'll stop down, talk to Pete.
Okay.
And see if we can get a scheduled day, maybe two or three times a week.
Okay.
Like a Monday, Wednesday, Friday kind of thing.
Very good. And John Karge, do you have a sign ready to go into the, for any race parking lot? For the parking restrictions are?
Yeah, I put some things together that I'd like to review with you.
Okay, all right, very good. Okay, are there any other comments on those issues that we've brought up? Any comments from the board on any issues? Questions? If you're a member of the public and you're on the YouTube meeting, we're about to ask if anybody from the public wants to make a comment. So this is the time when you can make a public comment. Are there any public comments? Could I have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Penessa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Rich, we will, Rich Danielle, we will be going, we will be taking a vote after this.
Okay, let me put you into session and then I'll share a session graphic with the public. Who's going into executive session?
So all the trustees and the attorney. Do we need Walter?
Matt, remember last month I talked about two personnel changes? I was wondering if we discussed it any further?
Why don't you come in from the beginning of executive with us then, Walter?
So I have in now Craig Wallace, Jennifer, Kevin Huber, Christine Catalano, Mary Penessa, Mayor Alexander, trustee Lammers, and Walter Burke. Does anybody else need to go into this session?
I think you got everybody.
Okay, if that's everybody, I'm opening the room and you guys can go ahead in. Just text us, text us when you're coming out.
I think I got it. I'm here.
You are?
I want you to know I have like three laptops in my closet back here and I don't know how to set any of them up.
Better tell one of those kids to set it up for you.
Yeah. Good luck. Well, I guess I got my phone working good for now, but I'll have to figure it out.
What are you laughing at?
Laughing at you, Kevin.
Can't wait to get one of those.
He loves my walker.
But when he has it, he's not going to like it.
Okay. Are we all here?
Yes.
Could I get a vote to come out of executive session?
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Kristin Catalano. All those in favor?
Aye.
And so we're having a special meeting on October 20th at 2:30 in the afternoon. And the subject of that meeting will be the 25 South Remsen bid for, to do the work in Phase One. We, we are adjourning the Phase Two to the 28th. Can I get a motion?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Right, and then the 10 North Street. We are asking Brian to do an OTR and adjourning to November 18th. Can I get a motion?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Remmers, all those in favor?
Aye.
And Eight Tribuco Place, we're going to vote to accept the bid for the work that has to be done there. And that's on the 20th at 2:30. Can I get a motion?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
That's Mary. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then the Central Hudson regulator is going to be the easement. We're going to adjourn that to 10:20. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Take Kevin second. Kristin?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reposed, okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Mary, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too, everybody.
Everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Sweet dreams.